Good evening, everyone. We have a public hearing this evening. It is 6:25, and I would like to convene that public hearing to give the public the opportunity to comment regarding a proposed amendment to the approved concept plan and preliminary plan for the Thistle Creek PRD subdivision. Can you take us through this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hi, everyone. The, this is a, an amendment to the preliminary plan for the Thistle Creek subdivision. This body approved a PRD for Thistle Creek, what, a year ago, two years ago, however long it wa, go was. Since that time, the subdivisions in the process of being constructed, however, there's been some topographical issues that made it difficult to comply with the open space requirement. So, we've, were required and we're obligated to run them back through the process again. That started with Planning Commission, who approved an amendment to the PRD subdivision. You have legislation before you tonight to approve the amendment, and this public hearing is a necessary predicate for you guys to move forward with that piece of it as well. Mr. Yehn can tell you the details about precisely what, how it's amended, but that's the general lay of the land.
Do you want to take a minute?
Yep. In your packet this evening, there's a, there's the approved landscape and trail plan from the original PRD subdivision. Basically, what is being proposed to be removed is the entire trail system that goes down the shared driveway and then goes behind sub lots nineteen, or twelve to nineteen, through the woods. In your packet, there's also pictures. There's some very drastic elevation changes and some topographic issues in there that even if the trail, it would be considerably difficult to construct. But if, and it is constructed, it will be difficult to maintain and could pose a safety hazard because there's some areas where it's just wide enough on a ridge to put the trail in and then immediately drops off ten, fifteen feet to the sides. So what they're proposing, or what Mr. Summers is proposing, is that he puts the money, the $22,468.75 into an account, basically that the city would hold, and then the subdivision, or the HOA in the future, could obtain that money to do open space improvements in the subdivision, as opposed to doing this walking trail. So, my understanding is that several of the homeowners have, have stated that they are in favor of removing this trail. Some of them didn't know that there was going to be a trail, and others didn't want it running alongside their house. So, with that, Planning Commission unanimously approved removing this. I think the one tweak they made was that the landscaping that was going to be along the trail, along the side of that shared driveway, would remain. So they would be, they will be on, they will have to install that landscaping. There, I think there's four or five trees.
So that amount of money is not in the control of the city. It's in, the homeowners association will control it.
Well, the city will have it, but the, for the, we will, we will physically be the keepers of it until they add, they will have to provide us with what they want to spend it on in the future for open space improvements.
Have to be in that sub, that, that housing development?
Yes. That's, that's how it was set aside.
Do we have to approve it?
Glad I said goodbye.
We will not release the funds unless it's consistent with the directive of open space improvement for the PRD subdivision.
I think Dave's, are you asking, does the city, like, if staff would approve it or if council would approve it? Is that what your question?
The way everything's been drafted, city, city staff would have the discretion
to interpret the plan and the approvals to release the funds when appropriate.
Staff would on their own?
Yes.
So this is not a payment to the city in lieu of installing that, that the city then can use for their own purposes?
Correct. It, it would be used for the intent of the original purpose, but in a different matter than was originally approved.
I will open this up to the public. If anyone would like to comment, please come up to the podium and state your name and your address.
Richard Summers, and the principal of Thistle Creek Development. Steve Prewell summed it up, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I guess the only question I have is, when the original plan was laid out, this was not envisioned at that point? This is something that kind of all goes.
It was very difficult terrain to speak. It, it backs up the rocky cellars. I don't know if you're familiar with that. We, we did not realize the steepness and the amount of disturbance to the green space if we were to take away these hills and stuff. So, I then approached, again, a number of people were concerned about the safety. I've not had one resident that said they want it. We have discussed it with multiple people. There's been a few people, I think, that came out to see it, and it, it would be very challenging and a real hazard to have this.
Just to confirm what Mr. Summers has said, this was something, it was shown on the original drawings, the original documents, that the city planning commission approved this in concept. It was not found in later documents, but the difficulty, the fit, the practical difficulty of actually building a trail here several months ago, Mr. Yehn, Mr. Summers, myself, walked the property, and I, and I will confirm that it would be both difficult and frankly dangerous to put a trail where it was proposed. And there's really not any, because of the ravines back there, there's not really another practical location for it. And on top of that, then, we have the residents coming forward and saying that they didn't know about it, and in any case, they don't want it. So I see, it's clearly a, to me, a slam dunk case that we would do, as Mr. Yehn stated, that we're going to basically put this money aside for other future improvements within this, within this subdivision. So that those people who are, who bought into the subdivision, their money, in theory, would have gone to building this trail as part of their cost of their lot. That money will now be held for them to use at some future date to maintain the, the common open area within, within the subdivision.
I might add that they've discussed some improvements, like park benches and things like that, that would be a capital improvement and improve the quality of the subdivision along the sidewalks. I'd also add that this amount of money that we're offering was based on the construction estimate that was approved by the city engineer, and that's how this value was determined. We actually have that bonded to guarantee the completion.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, the time is 6:33, and I would like to close this public hearing. The time is 6:33, and I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council to order. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the one individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy. Please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Chuha?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Laoco?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, before we proceed any further, might we consider amending the agenda to bring up this residence adoption for the announcement of decision regarding Thistle Creek forward sooner, rather than having all the residents sit here through the whole meeting?
What item are we talking about, Andy?
This is item 12C.
Hi. Just one thing I want to ask, is how many people are here in reference to the announcement to decision for that issue?
Two? Only two?
I think most of the folks are here for Vi's.
Oh, okay. Well, then, let's proceed, definitely let's proceed to that.
All right. Not a bad call, though, Andy.
Good job, Andy.
Okay, we're moving on to approval of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the regular session minutes from April 11th? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Move it.
Move it in second. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco? Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, a resolution of appreciation for Vi Parsons. Amy, please read the resolution in its entirety.
A resolution of appreciation in recognition of Vi Parsons' 100th birthday. Whereas Vi Parsons was born on May 4th, 1924, and celebrated her 100th birthday. And whereas Vi moved to Chardon in 1942, where she still resides today. And whereas Vi's legacy includes three daughters, four grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and two great-great, and a great-great-granddaughter. And whereas Vi enjoys traveling, having visited a multitude of countries throughout her lifetime, and enjoys nature and tending to her yard. And whereas the city of Chardon hereby honors Vi Parsons as a treasure to this community for her exemplary life well-lived. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Chardon, state of Ohio, that section one, the council of the city of Chardon personally and collectively, and on behalf of the government and the residents of the city, desires to honor Ms. Parsons for her long life and prosperity, and wishes her many more happy productive years. Section two, the mayor of the city of Chardon shall present the original of this resolution to Ms. Vi Parsons.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Move it.
Second. Move the second. Discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Resolution number 5-24, a resolution of appreciation. Resolution number 5-24, a resolution of appreciation.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 5-24?
Move it.
Second. Move the second. Further discussion? Vi, we don't hand out a whole lot of 100-year-old recognition documents like this, and you should be absolutely congratulated. You're, you are a treasure, as stated in the document. You've been a great neighbor on my street for many, many years, and it's nice to see so many of your family members and friends in attendance with you tonight. How many countries have you been to?
Can't even remember.
More than me, I guarantee that.
Quite a few, really.
Quite a few. Want to say anything?
I am so happy that I brought this forward to council. I think you deserve it, and I've known you for most of my life, and I appreciate you.
Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Why don't you come up here? Turn around here. There we go. Spend this, this around. Congratulations, Vi.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Welcome to stick around for the meeting, or like a brief amount of time for exits?
We'll give you some, give you some time.
Thank you.
Have we ever done 100-year resolution before? We have?
Wow. Wow.
resolution of appreciation for Amy Day. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Move the second. Call the question.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
And I'm going to read this in its entirety. A resolution of heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to clerk of council Amy Day for her service to the city of Chardon. Whereas the position of clerk of council is an essential part of city government, and whereas the position of clerk of council provides the professional link between the citizens and their government, and whereas clerk of council Amy Day performs her responsibilities in an exemplary manner, and whereas council particularly appreciates clerk of council Amy Day's patience, organization, politeness with the general public, and her commitment to making sure that council follows all necessary protocols. Very much so on the, all of that. And whereas the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024, is professional municipal clerks' week, and whereas it is most appropriate that council recognizes the service and accomplishments of clerk of council Amy Day. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Chardon, Jogga County, state of Ohio, that section one, the council and administration formally wish to recognize and further extend its appreciation to our clerk of council Amy Day, and to all the professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Section two, it is found to determine that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meeting, meetings open to the public in compliance with the legal requirements. Ben helped with this, by the way. That's why it's going on and on. This resolution is hereby, it goes on, is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that it is immediately necessary to recognize clerk of council Amy, Amy Day's service and commitment to the city. Therefore, provided this resolution receives the affirmative vote of two-thirds of all members elected to council, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage and approval of the mayor, otherwise from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Passed on this, passed and adopted on this ninth day of May 2024. So, that is the resolution, and is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
You read the whole thing. It was for the second, second and third time. So I said yes, so move second.
Discussion, call the question on that, please, Amy.
Mr. Martin?
Sorry, we're making you work on your.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Resolution number 6-24, a resolution.
Of appreciation.
Appreciation of heartfelt gratitude and appreciation. Resolution number 6-24, a resolution of heartfelt gratitude and appreciation.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 6-24?
Move it. Second.
Move the second. Discussion. Amy, this, you really do deserve everything that was written in here and a whole lot more. We greatly appreciate your efforts, and you do keep us on track, and we love you for it, so.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. You make it easy, you really do. This council, yes.
Absolutely not, and you're our glue. You are.
Thank you. I enjoy, I really do enjoy.
I'll just say, having worked with Amy when I was upstairs, saved my neck, I don't know how many times. We are very, very fortunate to have her, and I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Just have him, like, right here?
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
And I second everything that Dave said. I think I may be the longest-serving council person.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, wonderful, wonderful job. You're not leaving us anytime soon, I hope.
No plans to, no.
Good.
No, no, no.
That's what I was afraid of.
Many years till retirement, so. Thank you, everyone.
You're most welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, still do, 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 let's, any other comments? If not, Amy, please call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Shouldn't you present that to her down here, and she can get a picture taken?
We can, we can do that, sure.
News media. That's a vote. Isn't Heather going to carry the flower down? Can't get out of it that easy.
I can hand it over.
I have too many to take. I don't think we signed it. I figure you're the one we have to spray all over. I guess I'm the same. Get on with it. I think this sniffles in my mouth. Who's that? Who's this? Small as that? It's like the water's smaller than a whole bowl. You believe how much I have. Here. Chris told me.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate you, too. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
report. Andy?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. The first few items here tonight have to do with staffing. First off, Amy Day has resigned immediately.
Randy knows this.
Patrolman Nick Buckman has tendered his resignation, I'm not kidding on that one, April 17th, 2024. His last day was May 1st, and he had started with the city six years ago in March of 2018. We'll miss, miss Nick. Michael Case, maintenance worker in Division of Streets, Cemeteries, and Parks, also tendered his resignation on April 22nd. His last day was May 3rd, and he started with the city in April of 2023, so it was just here a little over a year. On the hiring side, Brody Betts, he was hired for the position of full-time maintenance worker in the Division of Lands and Buildings. He started this week and brings with him several years of experience as a maintenance technician for both Gilmore Academy and Lake Erie College. So I assume he showed up for his third day of work, so we're good so far, and wish Brody the best of luck. The 2023 annual report has been completed, and I believe everybody has a copy of it. It is up on the website now for residents to see. Just a few of the notable events, not all the ones that are in the book. I picked out, I just picked out some. The first was that the manager, I recommended transferring the dispatch responsibilities from the city to the sheriff's office. Council did approve that request, and the dispatch center was closed on June 30th of 23. The 2023 charter review committee met, but they did not make any recommendations for changes to the charter this round. The city had commissioned a hotel market feasibility study by Core Distinction Group, and the study indicated that there was a need for upper-mid-scale hotel with 70 to 90 guest rooms. The regulations for the use of the Heritage House restrooms were revised. The restrooms will be closed and portlets required if the duration of an event is more than four hours and the estimated attendance will be greater than 100. That's been already in effect for this year. The city hosted the first annual city employee service recognition breakfast, which was held at the Heritage House. The hometown hero banner program was kicked off, and the banner should be going up here shortly. The collective bargaining agreements, the CBAs, were negotiated between both AFSMI and OPBBA. The additionally, the part-time patrol organized as a bargaining unit. The following three units went to fact-finding, the full-time patrol, the sergeants, and the part-time patrol. Vi Performing Arts dissolved their operation at 106 Water Street and at the Jogga Theater at the end of 2023. So as always, there's plenty of things that happen throughout the year. This is just a, kind of a brief synopsis of some of the, the points that did take place, more on the council end. But if you go through the annual report, each department lays out what they were able to accomplish, what they did. There's a lot of data in there, a lot of good information for everyone to always dig into, and it's readable, so it's not a real dry report, so. And there's, I always ask for more pictures, as staff knows, pictures, pictures, please. Hope you, hope you like it when you get a chance to see it. I've asked Paul to prepare a couple of things for this evening before we move into the public works projects. One is from last month, Councilman Blackley asked us about the forever chemicals, and so Paul is going to elaborate more that, on that tonight. And then also, he's going to talk about the grant request that we have out for the second clearwell down at the water treatment plant. So, Paul, kicking it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, as a follow-up to the question from last month's meeting regarding the federal EPA's announcement last month regarding forever chemicals, I apologize because I was a little taken off guard by the phrase forever chemicals. It's nothing that we use in a day-to-day basis, and I hadn't read the, and I was quite surprised that the EPA used that term, but the following day, I went and, and read the article, and I appreciate it, it being brought to my attention. As I mentioned, we don't use that term. It's nothing that we, that we tend to use in, in water production. It is a slang term for a bunch of words that I can't pronounce, but they are PFAS, PFBS, PFOS, et cetera. They're basically six compounds that were included in this, included in this decision by the EPA. To better answer the question that Councilman Blackley asked, we were first made aware of these pending regulations back in 2020. We voluntarily participated in the Ohio EPA's initial round of testing on hazardous chemicals, including these three compounds. The results of those tests yielded no violations of any kind on our, on our part, and only one community in Jogga County, it was determined, had PFAS compounds in their water sample. So fast forward to 2024, the water department was contacted and supplied a kit by the federal EPA requesting samples of our finished product. This round of testing targeted specifically these synthetic compounds or forever chemicals, along with 24 other types of analytes. On March 26th of this year, we received formal notice that all results were within the legal limits, and we had a slight overage in lithium. We are working with the, one point, we are working with the Ohio EPA to better identify the sources of lithium in raw water samples. Typically, it's found in groundwater. As we work with them, we will try to determine the true level of concern for this element. Therefore, I just want everyone in the community to be assured that staff is aware of new and federal. Therefore, I just want everyone in the community to be assured that staff is aware of new and federal standards as they are presented to us and we've been working with the state and federal EPA offices for some time now on continued compliance. With respect to Clearwell number two and the Chardon Hydro pillar, otherwise known as the water tower. As you will recall, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-eight CIP has two specific projects in the infrastructure and maintenance portion. The first project that is scheduled is the addition of a second one-point-two-million-dollar clear well, number two. Plan to engineer in two thousand twenty-six and to build in two thousand twenty-seven if funded. This is the first step in a two-pronged planned rehabilitation for the one-million-gallon water tower, tentatively scheduled for engineering in two thousand twenty-seven and for rehabilitation in two thousand twenty-eight. Total cost for the, estimated total cost or engineers, estimated cost at this point in time is roughly two-and-a-half million dollars for that rehabilitation. With an estimated four-month shutdown required for the work on the water tower, temporary storage vessels for potable, would, potable water would need to be implemented on location to accommodate the daily use and emergency needs, obviously. Rental for such storage containers would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for the four- or five-month period and would yield no return whatsoever once the project has been completed. Therefore, staff has proposed, has proposed the addition of a second clear well to be placed adjacent to Clearwell number one at the water treatment plant. This three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-gallon second clear well will conceptually include, was conceptually included in the two thousand five design of the water treatment facility, but it was just never installed. The second clear well improve, will improve chemical chlorine contact mixing for the maximum production of one-point-two-million gallons of water per day and will serve as an additional storage vessel for the water tower rehabilitation. So instead of renting, it was decided that perhaps we could build a three-hundred-thousand-gallon storage facility and therefore benefit for it after the fact. One thing that should be mentioned, this was, the clear well was one of the top recommendations in the two thousand twenty-one water model prepared by CT Consultants. I'll go on to say that since two thousand twenty, this was, this has been on our radar. But since two thousand twenty, staff has researched and applied for many grant opportunities for both of these projects, most recently submitting paperwork to Congressman Joyce's office for consideration to the Appropriations Subcommittee of the Interior and Environment. We are hoping to qualify for grant funds for the EPA's State and Tribal Assistance Program, or what they call STAG. It should be noted that the second clear well is important for contact mixing and value engineering for the water tower project, but is not necessarily eminent or, you know, it, it, we're, we're working without it. It's really, it, it, it hooves us to do it from a cost standpoint. If we get, when we have to do the tower, the tower work is absolutely necessary. The studies that have done, inspections that are done have yielded that we definitely have maintenance issues that need to be addressed. With the water tower, there are some structural issues that will definitely need to be addressed. And there are, that, we have to paint it. It's, it's in need of a paint job. So staff will work to evaluate and rank future projects accordingly in the upcoming CIP to accommodate the water tower rehabilitation if we are unsuccessful in our attempts for grants, but we continue to try to do so. So with that, I can answer any questions on either of the two.
Paul, you said, I'm sorry, did you say two million or two-and-a-half million for the rehabilitation, the total cost for, for the water tower?
Engineering and construction for the water tower, two-point-five.
Two-point-five. And what about the clear well?
One-point-two.
Okay, so.
Seventy-three thousand for engineering and one point, one million for construction.
So the water tower is like, we, is an absolute, is a must?
Can't do without it.
And how old is it?
Built in.
Seventy-four.
Four, yeah.
So what, how, how much money are we looking to, or trying to get with the grant, like the grant?
All of it.
The whole thing?
With, well, right now, with the clear well grant that I applied, that we're trying to get, you know, we, we have to provide twenty percent. That's typically what they're asking for. But we can, I mean, we're asking for as much as we can get.
Do we have a, like, what's the life on the water tower? Like, do we know, like, okay, it's going to have to be done by this time, like this year? It's going to have to be done, you had.
I don't have a drop dead.
Not yet.
But it's, we would be, I wouldn't be doing my job if I was waiting for that date.
Okay.
It's something that has to happen. We, we've started to plan for it years ago. It's getting to the point where I, I would be hesitant to push it back any further in the capital improvement plan.
Then twenty twenty, you said twenty, twenty-seven, twenty, okay. And so the money that we've been saving or putting forth towards this, so how much are, so you're saying it's eighty percent for this?
Typically, grants are twenty percent match.
Okay, so if not, this would be a, we'd have to go back to the tech, like, we'd have to take this from something else from.
We would have to subsidize, yeah, we would have to.
Taxpayers.
Not taxpayers, I'm sorry.
Ratepayers.
Ratepayers.
Ratepayers. We'd have to go back to, okay. So, but, but the burden would fall on, on them to.
Correct. Yeah, and/or other projects would have to be postponed indefinitely.
Okay.
So that's really, the point is, it's, it's, you know, four or five million dollars of projects that we have coming out. As I know, we've talked about it before, but I think it's important to make everyone aware that we are trying to get the grant money multiple places, multiple times, and there might be ways to mix them together to make it work. And hopefully, we'll get it. Paul was asked to supply supplemental information for this recent grant request. I don't know, did you mention that?
Last Friday, I was given twelve hours to supply supplemental information to Congressman Joyce's office and we hope to hear something soon, so.
Do we know when that application process, like, when it closes and when decisions?
I don't even technically know what the process is at this point. I don't know who's evaluating. All I know is that if I didn't supply that supplemental information, we probably would not be considered.
Okay.
And the mayor and I met with Katie Berger probably a couple of years ago at this point in time and talked about this particular project with her. Katie is Congressman Joyce's representative here in this area. And coincidentally, she was at the open house, the ribbon cutting for the Ryan Holmes project yesterday. And I had sent her an email, so we talked about that email specifically with this project also, so we're just trying to make sure that our voice is being received and considered.
First off, Paul, thank you for addressing the, the forever chemicals quote-unquote issue. And I apologize for blindsiding you on that before. I appreciate very much that you looked into this. And, and I'm grateful that it appears that we have pretty much not much, nothing to worry about.
At this point, no, and we've actually been, you know, on, involved in it since it's been on the state level, so.
In regard to the water tower and the clear well, are we, would we also be pursuing, you know, EPA division, Ohio EPA Division of Water low, low rate loans for that work if we actually have to pay for it ourselves?
We certainly will. Yeah, absolutely. If it has to be a loan, we'll go after the loan.
Okay, and it also.
Whatever the interest is.
Qualify for Ohio Public Works Commission funding as well.
We, yeah, we have a, we hope to get an outline to, what is Shane's, Shane's position? OPWC coordinator for our area, for District Seven. We've told him that once we, we're going to give him our ten-year outlook. And hopefully, that's included and can, and will be considered as an option.
The thought at this point was to try to get some of the OPWC money for the water tower itself.
Yeah.
So if we can get the clear well done first and then try to get the money for the water tower with another source as well as OPWC, because that won't be enough.
With, with the water tower out of commission, and I understand the clear well will provide additional capacity in, in the, in the system. But what about water pressure? We don't have the head in the tower itself. We'd have to have additional pumping in the system.
Pumps would run.
To maintain.
Pumps would run more frequently. Hence, the, the loop system that's now completed and opened in Hidden Glen would assist in that. But it would be a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week monitored process, as it was the last time it was shut down. Or we, you know, it's when work was done and there was, the tower was shut down. So, yeah, we would, I, I can't speak to the law. I don't know. I would have to contact, based on the fact that we have a loop now and the modeling was done in two thousand twenty-one. I would have to defer to CT and ask them to perhaps look at some of the ramifications on pressure with the plant down. But we don't run all our high-service pumps all at one time. They're variable speed pumps, so one's working at capacity while the other two are working at a lower capacity and the other three are idle. So we have the ability to increase pressure.
Thank you.
I do need something. Based on that, part of these grant applications, I've seen that they want to find community support. In this most recent update that I did for this particular one for the clear well, I, I made mention that this was approved by Chardon City Council in the capital improvement plan for this. But I would also ask that a motion be, a motion be made that provides continual committee, committee support, community support for these two projects and that would also, the motion would include continued direction for staff to go ahead and try to obtain said grants. Does that make sense? I can say clear if I.
Get that, Amy?
Yes, it is.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Paul, the question?
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on, the city did receive a gift from the American Legion Chardon Post, number six, one sixty-seven, in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to put towards the individual state champ signs. Since we received the gift, per the gift acceptance policy, we can accept it by motion and I would ask for a motion to accept that gift.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been moved. It's seconded. Further discussion? Paul, the question?
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the public work projects update, the Hidden Glen Water Main Loop that Paul just referenced is operational and completed this time. And the final reimbursement request will be, is submitted to OPWC. We might even have received it or it's en route. Maple Highlands Trail Stream and Wetland Restoration Project is completed also. I don't know if you've been out there, but everything seems to be growing pretty well as well. The twenty twenty-four asphalt resurfacing of Chardon Windsor Road from Grant Street to six oh eight, no update on that particular project. The Center Street Sanitary Improvement Project was scheduled to begin, was scheduled and did begin on Monday. The majority of the work will be performed at nighttime, as we discussed in a prior meeting, between eight PM and five thirty AM. Yes? Seventh Avenue Repair Widening and Extension Project is complete. The final reimbursement is due to OPWC by June first. The Sidewalk Maintenance and Catch Basin Program, work on the catch basins began on April twenty-second. I'm sure you saw them around town and you've seen them around more lately as well. Once they're done with the catch basin work, they'll move on to the sidewalk maintenance. And they held off on that intentionally until after the festival was done. The Street Maintenance Program, no update this time. And then Colonial Park Lift Station improvements, the requests for quotes were due yesterday and we did receive three. So that'll be moving forward as well. Happy to answer any questions.
The Maple Highlands Trail Project, in case you're asked, it's not going to be a golf course finish-type product. And, and everyone should anticipate that. It's basically trying to restore what nature would have left there, so it's, it's going to be, it's not going to be a maintained area. It's, it's, it's created for that, natural habitat. So in case you're asked, and why are they letting it go and grasses grow and so on, that's, that's the intent. That was Davy Tree's intent in the project.
Yeah, we wanted it to be also as maintenance-free as possible, so there really just going to be one, one path of the mower on the side of the trail there.
So I was going to ask about that. There seems to be some plants that they did put in that didn't make it through the winter. Is there any warranty on those?
There is.
Okay, and then there's some just areas that have like super rough aggregate that's almost blending it, blended out into the trail, like right along the edge, so I, I didn't know it was fully complete, but obviously, the fence has to come out at the silk.
Yeah, the silk, the silk fence will be removed and we've met with the plaza owners. They intend to clean up a good portion of the property line between the asphalt and the path. Again, that's the finished product. That's, it's going to be, it wasn't a import of, you know, screen top soil.
Didn't seem to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, like they took some trees and kind of just dead trees and stuck them in there. It's, it's intentional.
Yeah, the key is water flow and to keep the water flowing and, and, and no maintenance plantings and so on. So as long as that continues, that's the, that's the focus of the project.
Yeah, I guess if we're going to make one pass or like one width of the mower, we may want to inspect before it gets too high.
Yeah, see if there's other stuff in there.
Yeah, you don't want to hit a large piece of aggregate.
All right, are there any other questions for Randy?
Paul, you may want to mention the water shut-off in Woods of Boone the other night smoothly. Notices were provided in a number of different ways, including door drops or mail drops. And anticipated turnoff at nine o'clock. Water restored by no later than nine AM on Tuesday morning and water was restored at two forty-five. So it went very, very smoothly as far as I'm concerned. So that went very well.
Yeah.
A lot of homes without water.
Yes.
It went well.
And we appreciate everyone's cooperation and the United Postal Service for allowing us to put the door drops in mailboxes and not in paper boxes, because no one looks in their paper boxes. We know that, so.
Okay, once again, any other questions for Randy? All right, thank you, Randy. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Planning Commission Report. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planning Commission met in regular session on March twenty-sixth. We had three items on the agenda. The first item has to do with the proposed Chardon School System bus garage on Washington Street. And that item has been tabled and we are having a special Planning Commission meeting on May fourteenth, this coming Tuesday, and where that will, that project will, will begin to be considered. The second item on the agenda was the resident at two fifteen Canfield Drive requested a variance for rear yard setback, which was granted. And then the third item on the agenda was Mr. Summers and the request that we've already heard this evening for Thistle Creek. And I won't belabor that anymore at this point. Steve, anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Can I ask you to, I get lots of questions recently about what's happening in the old Denora Tech site.
Okay.
Can you just say what's going on there?
So what you, what you saw was massive piles of concrete. What happened was B and B Wrecking, who was doing the demolition, has a, has a large concrete grinder, for lack of a better term. They're one of the few companies in northeast Ohio that have one and it went down for about four months, so they kept. So instead of continually grinding it and taking it off, they ended up stockpiling there. And that's how we ended up with these massive piles of, like, if you were there, like, I think at the beginning of last week, it was probably thirty, forty feet tall. Denora Tech did assure me, and so did B and B Wrecking, that all that aggregate minus a little bit of a, there'll be like a little bit of a, like a parking area so they can have, like, for mowers and stuff to continually maintain the property and a little bit of a, and a little bit of a drive to get to that. Everything else will be back down to smooth, flat grass. But the big piles will all be gone. And probably within the next, I'd say, month.
Steve, are we getting reports from Jogga Soil and Water on, on erosion control measures? Steve, are we getting reports from Jogasol Water on erosion control measures on that site?
Yeah, they go out there, they've been.
They have been inspected.
Yes.
Okay. They're, they're the entity then that will ensure that it is in fact going to be closed and seeded at some point?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And then what timeline are they under to determine what they're going to do with the property, or are they waiting for the commissioners to make a decision on the adjacent property? What's going on there?
That's my understanding right now. They're waiting on the commissioner's piece and what happens ultimately with that property.
I could add somewhat related. The ribbon cutting was yesterday for Maple Trace, and at that event, the city received a number of compliments on working with the city, specifically Steve and Doug. And I would just like to forward that publicly so people realize that we, you know, we do work with people and it does go well, and they had nothing but good things to say. So I appreciate, especially to you two, for the work you've done over there. It was nice to hear.
Good points, Dave. Thanks. Andy, you have anything else?
Out on that.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Council Committee Reports, Agenda Item Number Nine, Safety Committee. Andy?
Okay, back again. So Safety Committee met on Thursday, April 24th. We had a presentation again from both from our Finance Director and also from Justin Geiser, our Fire Chief, concerning the fire and EMS levy. And there's an item on our agenda, the last item on the agenda this evening will start the process. So Debbie and I received, and the committee received their reports and recommendations. Mark provided us with a detailed study of what the costs involved are, but of course, one of the steps that needs to be taken, and that'll be in the legislation this evening, is to get the official tax numbers from the county auditor. That starts the process. Then, as you will recall, well, we recommended in our, unanimously in our committee, that we go ahead and proceed with the recommendations made by the Fire Chief with regard to proceeding with a renewal of the existing seven mil levy and an additional 1.5 mil levy. These things will be discussed in more detail at the next council meeting, and you'll be given, I assume, Mark, you'll have a more detailed report at that point that will be given to council. I don't think that this study was not in the council package, it was just something that Debbie and I had at the committee meeting.
Yes, that will be, that will be provided.
Assistant Chief Larry Gaspar is here. Larry, do you want to say anything at this point?
Good evening, everybody. It's kind of a little bit of a throwback for me to get to come back and talk to council. I got a quick question. Did Amy have to type up her own resolution?
No.
Not.
That was the decision we made to have Ben work on that.
Uh-huh. Very nice, well deserved.
Thank you.
We all survived the Maple Festival, so it's nice to see everybody back. Just a couple of quick pointers that are coming up within the next three years for us. We're trying to bring our staffing up to six around the clock with three full-time and three part-time. Right now, we have one shift that has six, or two shifts that have six on during the day, five at night, and our level of calls have gotten to the point where we need to be at six around the clock to cover all of it, cover everything. A couple of changes that we've made in the past is trying to save money through employee healthcare, and as you guys know, we're always looking for grants and different ways to help us pay for apparatus, fire equipment, anything that we don't have to come back and ask our local taxpayers to help us pay for. One of the things we're also looking into is what's called cost recovery, and that is, let's just say we have like a big hazmat incident, and we use a lot of supplies to, you know, soak up whatever's on the ground, or if our firefighter turnout gear gets contaminated and that's something that we can't clean and needs to be replaced, then we can do, we can bill insurance companies to get that, get those funds paid back to us. Right now, through hazmat, through the state of Ohio, there is a thing called Bill the Spiller, and that's, a lot of times that's with like tanker truck rollovers or anything like that that they can be charged with. But with the cost recovery, once we start doing that, we can even bill for things like traffic control during motor vehicle accidents, use of jaws of life, and then any type of equipment that's disposable that we have to pay for to replace. And then we've talked a lot about replacing the ladder truck. You know, currently, right now, it's 22 years old, and we need to be proactive to start that process, to start looking into it, because even if we order today, we're looking at possibly three to four years down the line to actually receive that vehicle. And since COVID, it seems like everything has doubled in price and doubled in time that it takes for us to actually receive things. And then with the levy, you know, as we always do, you know, we'll go out and do a lot of public speakers. We always attend the League of Women Voters Night and the Candidates Nights to promote it, and we'll also have an open house where members of the public and the city can come, residents can come and tour the station and put a face to everybody that works every day, goes out and protects the public. And then we'll also put a lot of information on our social media as well that everybody can see, so.
I assume the fall issue of the city newsletter will be up plenty of time prior to Washington.
Yep, that too. And I think you guys usually post something on your website too, as far as the levy information anyway.
Probably, right. Similar probably to what the newsletter has, yeah.
Or having passed anyway.
Mm-hmm.
That newsletter is red, I can tell you that.
And thanks to Amy and the group that put that all together. Debbie, do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Larry.
It's nice to come back and speak to everybody again.
So that's really all that I have for the Safety Committee. Ben, do you want to add anything else about the mechanics or what we need to go into?
No, you have before you later tonight a resolution formally asking the county to tell us how much money we would collect under a variety of scenarios for renewals and replacement levies. Procedurally, the county has to certify those numbers to us, which the Finance Director will then review, look at the objectives financially of what we're trying to do to support the Fire Department, and then you'll receive an additional piece of legislation that sets forth what we want to put to the voters.
Yeah, we need to get that on the, but we need to apply to get that on the ballot by August 7th.
Our intent is to get it well in advance of that.
Yes, thank you. That concludes the Safety Committee report.
All right. Any other questions for Randy or Deb? All right, thank you both. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, Hearing of Persons Before Counsel. We have no one scheduled in that regard. We'll move on to general public. If there's anyone here that wishes to address City Council, please come up, state your full name and where you live. Well, Bill?
I am again. Bill Hess, I live on North Street, and this is a little bit complaint department thing, I suppose, but nevertheless, 7:30 to quarter of eight timeframe, Monday to Friday, I have the occasion to do a part-time job and drive down Center Street and then turn and go, I believe, make a left turn anyway, turn south on Cherry Street. And I put my turn signal on well in advance of that, and if you look at Operation of Motor Vehicles 4511-39, it states that, paragraph number two, under Section A1, required signal intention to turn or move right or left shall be given continuously not during not less than the last 100 feet traveled by the vehicle or trackless trolley before turning. Well, that puts you right at the point where the people that, I got my coffee, now I'm going to have to hurry, I'll be late, they pull out of the Starbucks parking lot and cut in front of you. And with the idea in my mind that I have my turn signal on far enough in advance of Cherry Street that I'm signaling, in accordance with the law, that I should be signaling within no more than 100 feet of that intersection, which also could be interpreted by the people that frequent Starbucks, that I'm really going to turn in there. And so they cut out in front of you because they think that they, I've got my coffee and I want to be late. So I don't know whether there's anything that can be done about this problem or not, but it happens, probably since Starbucks has been there, it's happened to me four or five times. Same exact scenario, and I'm sure it happens to other people too. People pull out of there, they whip in front of you and head away from town on Center Street, cut right in front of you. And I suppose they figure that what you're doing is signaling to turn into Starbucks. So, I don't know. Again, it's probably just more my complaining than anything else, but I don't know whether there've been accidents there or not.
Chief?
I suspect that there have.
Not that I'm aware of, no?
No. I've had people cut in front of me several times there, so.
Unfortunately, it's just a mark of a lot of lack of courtesy we see anymore in general traffic. People go, you know, make left turns when the light's already gone red.
I had the occasion to stop at the State Patrol Post probably a year ago when they put the zigzag lines on Route 44 with the express question of, does that mean that you're not allowed to drive through there anymore? And of course, they indicated yes. And I said, by the way, does it seem to you guys that people are driving a lot more recklessly now than they were, say, five or 10 years ago? Basic answer was absolutely. So everybody's kind of being more sloppy about their driving than they were. But at any rate, that is something that I know has happened to me several times.
Okay, Bill, thanks for your comments. Anyone else want to address council? Okay, we'll move on then to Agenda Item Number 11, Old Business. We have no old business. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 12, New Business. New Business A, Consider Announcement of Decision and Municipal Approval for a Text Amendment to amend Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Chardon Godified Ordinances. And Ben's going to take us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief on this one. This Announcement of Decision is a requirement under your current zoning code. It authorizes or articulates an Announcement of Decision for the text amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code. So all that work you've done, this is one of the final steps to get it all done.
Doug, it looks like you have something to say there. Are you?
No, we were, I was helping Steve with where we were on the agenda.
Oh. Are you good now, Steve?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, you had any, that's it on your.
A motion to authorize the execution would be nice.
Is there a motion to authorize?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the discussion. Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Gra?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Thank you. Steve, we're moving on to 12B now.
12B or 11B?
Remember, we had.
Well.
Oh, that's what's throwing them off.
Stay with us. Okay, that's where it was.
Nope.
Just turn it over to me to discuss 12B.
I'm going to discuss 12B.
Thank goodness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second Announcement of Decision, which is another prerequisite under our current zoning code. This changes the zoning map so that it's consistent with the zoning code that you're going to pass tonight. So you got to pass an Announcement of Decision, you got to pass legislation, you're doing both those tonight. This is what you got to do to get that part done.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Gra?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Moving on to 12C, Consider Announcement of Decision and Municipal Approval for Amendment to the Preliminary Plan for Thistle Creek Subdivision PRD Plan Residential District Development. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through time to charm with these. This one is, again, a requirement of our zoning code is that we not adopt announcements of decisions and municipal approvals for planned residential development districts. This Announcement of Decision is the amendment to the Thistle Creek Subdivision PRD. You had a hearing on it today, you have legislation later tonight on it, so this is just one of the boxes we got to check. So a motion to authorize the execution of the Announcement of Decision is appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Gra?
Yes. Moving on to 12D, Consider Approval of Victim Advocate One and Two Job Descriptions in the Amendments to the Testification and Pay Plan. Back to Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've talked about this before, and Judge Topeka and Clerk Daly came to our budget meeting to discuss this, the amendments to the Pay Plan and the creation of the new job descriptions for the victim advocate one and two positions. As you're generally aware, we've made some changes to the legal department prosecution responsibilities and things of that nature. The victim's advocate position currently is subject to and under the supervision of the Law Director. In light of some of the prosecution changes we're making, we thought it was appropriate to reshuffle the responsibilities of oversight and then also amend the current structure, which is right now we have a program director and a part-time employee. The responsibilities are just too much for a one part-time and one full-time employee. The work that Tracy Frunk does in particular is great, but she's working a lot and she needs help. We've given her part-time help in the past, but she needs more. And so the judge, myself, the clerk, we've worked with the city manager, Heidi Delaney, to look at what options we have available to us, and we came up with these two new job descriptions and then an amendment to the Pay Plan for the two full-time victim advocate positions. Existing victim advocate will be the step two, or not step two, number two, and then victim advocate number one will be a full-time position below that. And so what you have is an amendment to address the workload and responsibilities that we certainly need to fulfill.
Ben, I noticed on these that the only thing I saw that was different on this was no, the previous experience for the G1, right? So that's the one who would be considered like the senior position and G2 would be a junior. I was just trying to figure out like, what's the difference between these? That was the only thing I saw on here, so maybe I missed it? I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, so the position was originally funded primarily through grants. This is something we have to do to comply with Marcy's Law and a couple other state and federal funding. And so the original program director position carries with it responsibilities that relate to ensuring that, to the extent there are. Both positions will be doing the work of a victim advocate, but the senior position will be responsible for ensuring compliance, tracking. It's more of an administrative burden that is not on the entry-level position.
So that's what, so that difference, previous experience as a victim advocate, that's enough to cover that difference between the two?
I think that gets, that achieves the objective, yes.
Okay.
Do they have the questions for Ben on this issue? Is there a motion to approve as shown?
So moved.
Move and second it, further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Well, you didn't respond, so I couldn't know.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move on to 12E. This is a consideration to, consider the design for the third side of pump filtration building along the Maple Highlands Trail by Elliot Miller. And Randy's gonna take us through a little history on this, and then we'll hear from Elliot.
Yep, just a brief background. Actually, we've been talking about this for years. The conversation started at the mayor's house years ago now, is what we would be doing with this building. Last September, if you recall, Rotary came in to request to be able to do the two murals that are already approved, that are in your packet, and I think we had approved all those diagrams in your packet. And at that time, council said, you know what, we'd like to see the third wall done as well, which is the north-facing wall, which is the wall to be considered tonight, that Elliot's gonna run it through. So we have that, and then in your packets, you also have the email from Elliot talking a little bit about it, and he'll go into that. So without any more from me, I'll be happy to introduce the city's muralist, Elliot Miller.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Elliot, welcome.
I'm gonna pull up the email as well.
And while he's doing that, Elliot also has another request of counsel tonight that he'll roll into when we're done talking about this side.
So, this picture is put together using different photographs because it takes me a long time to colorize these old pictures. If you look right at the corner of the, where the door is, you can see how everything will be turned into red and colorized. But I wanted to make sure that the design was approved before I spent the hours to fully render and color everything. And then people are going to be colored as well, and they might change positions and whatnot, but it's just to show you that there's gonna be people walking and dressed in 1800s clothing. And to the right side where those two boys are laying, I plan on that background being the park itself with potentially putting the bandstand in there somewhere. But I have to make sure that I can fit all the detail onto the brick wall. So, but yeah. So, once it's approved, I'll paint it fully on canvas and plan it out. So things might look a little different, but you're still gonna have the inner urban car, the courthouse, trees, and it's gonna look relatively the same as that, fully detailed and realistic.
So all three kinda tie together, right? Because on this side, it'll be the inner urban, and then the side facing the trail is the BNO with the locomotive engine there. And then on the side facing park, which you're gonna see when you drive by, has both, and talking about the Maple Leaf route.
Yeah, that introduces the route and the fact that both of these cars pass through there, and then each of the other walls are pictures of the inner urban, which went through the square, and then the BNO that went through the countryside.
And Mike Bud has already been out there and power washed it with his crew and removed the trees that were growing on top of the roof. Well, I guess there's a little bit of sediment over the 100 years or so that it's been there, or more. And that leads into the conversation, well, unless you want them to take action first, and then we can talk about the, trying to plaster it.
It doesn't matter to me. Are you talking about the bricks?
Yeah, let's finish with the design first and see if there's comments and concerns.
I think it looks great.
What do you think, Chris?
Well, I love it, and the staff was able to take the two existing ones that we approved months ago and then put Elliot's new concept up on, so you have more of a 3D dimensional issue, and that's what I asked Amy to throw up on the screen if possible. Elliot, I have a question, though. It's two things. One, on the, where it says Maple Leaf Route, I love that there's actually text up there. Do you think any text would work on the other two, on the other two panels? That's my first question. And the second one is, would it make sense, Elliot, to, on the quarters where the walls are coming together, to create almost a border to keep the three separated? Because right now you have them blending, and it works, but what's your artistic impression of what I'm suggesting?
I was considering a border especially because of how ugly the tops of the buildings are. So, I could create a border, so that would just kinda cut it off and you wouldn't really look at it. And without a border, it kinda looks like they're gonna crash into each other, so that could also separate them into two different pictures.
And the side of the building could kinda frame it a little better?
Yeah, and I think it would create a separation between the, like, the actual background of, like, the baseball field and everything and where the pictures are. And then when it comes to the letters, I'd like to put the BNO symbol and the CNE symbol onto the brick. And Sherwin-Williams donated paint for the mural, and they requested that I put something related to Sherwin-Williams into the mural because of their donation. So there will be letters. I'm planning on having it saying something about the Rotary Club, the City of Chardon, and Sherwin-Williams in letters on the base and the border, potentially.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds appropriate. So you can see the sides there. Thanks, Amy, for getting those up there. And thanks for the staff for taking those images that Elliot supplied and superimposing them on the building to give us a better perspective.
Also, in this area is where some of the interpretive signs are going to go. They're ready, they tell the story about the history of the railroad. I think we have seven of them total that are gonna be in this general area. Right now, since they power washed that concrete circular area, we're talking about, we're thinking maybe some of those are gonna go on the backside of that, so people would walk up onto that and then stand and be able to read them, but that'll be worked out as we go through. So eventually, it's gonna be kind of a cool little space.
It absolutely is. Elliot, you wanna take us through anything else you wanna talk about? You're looking for...
Yeah, I think we've got a motion to...
So your ask is four grand for your work?
Mm-hmm.
That's just for the new panel, correct?
Yeah, the third wall, the north side. Mm-hmm.
And then you plan on starting on May, end of May?
Yeah, end of May.
And do you need help from anyone come down?
Maybe for some of the, like, priming of the wall, but nothing, like, artistically, like...
I don't know why you're looking over here.
I thought you were gonna say something.
No.
Yeah, Rotary, it's a service project for Rotary, so Rotary should be out there helping him get things ready and doing some things on the project.
So you need, well, is everyone okay with the new proposed design? And if so, and the cost, so we could make a motion to approve Elliot's new design for the waterhouse with also the $4,000 estimate for production?
Was it budgeted? Is that something that was budgeted?
I have to ask Andy.
We do have money in the budget.
Okay, good.
And we can cover it.
I'll make the motion.
Move and second it? Further discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yep.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, Elliot, for the next couple of months.
Let's talk, yeah, let's talk about the plastering first, and then we're going to the other.
Okay. Some of the, well, a lot of the wall has very deep mortar grooves, just from it sinking in, and the bricks are really starting to pop out. And I am worried that the mural will definitely not look as good as it could if we were to fill in some of the mortar and try to flatten the surface. We could either do a full render where we put an entire, like, covering of either plaster or concrete on the surface of the wall, or we could fill in the gaps with the mortar. Or if we can't get any of those to work and we still prefer that the mural look as I'd want it to look the best I can, I could put it on panel, and we could hang those panelings up. But if we can't get any of those approved, I would just still complete the mural onto the, straight onto the brick surface as it is.
Well, Elliot and I were talking, and Paul and I were talking, and Mike as well. And if you look at the side that we're looking at on the left-hand side, that's gonna face Park Avenue, the Maple Leaf Route, that already has half of it flat concrete at the bottom, and then the top is the brick. So I recommended Elliot that we start with that one, and that's one of the Rotary sides, and do whatever kind of plaster we need to do to see if we can make that work so it would look okay. And then go from whatever the result of that is onto the other two sides, and go from there.
So you'd put plaster on the whole side and then paint on top of it?
Correct.
It's painting, not top.
It's paint.
Okay.
But I'd still, I mean, that's my personal preference, would be to still be able to have some of the relief of the brick and not make it flat like a flat, you know, wall.
So we could do that in-house?
No.
The plaster or the mortar?
No.
I have a, I've been in contact with a...
Not on staff?
I do, not on staff. I have a number of Mason contacts who I've reached out to over the last two weeks. They've put me in touch with an individual who we will meet beginning of next week. I'd like you to be there when Mike calls you to, for that meeting. He specializes in this kind of stuff, and we'll have a lot of, we've sent him all the renderings, we've sent him the dimensions, we've sent him the live pictures that we've taken. He will work up a plan and a cost estimate, and we'll see what it is. The problem with putting a skin coat on, if you will, is you will take away all the nooks and crannies, and you'll lose that brick look underneath. And secondly, we're also hearing from Sherwin-Williams that they're not recommending a pre-application for the paint. So we have a little bit of work, technical work, to do to make sure that the artistic intent stays, but the functionality and it's not becoming a maintenance problem. You know, we really didn't do a whole lot at 106, and that worked out real well, but I understand that there's probably two or three different types of brick on this building that will need to be addressed. So we'll work it out, but we need some more time for a little bit more information and costs.
What was the other option, a panel?
Yeah, I could paint it on to, there's, I can't remember the exact technical term, but it's exterior panels that I could paint on to, and then we'd hang those up onto the wall. But then you don't get to see the bricks, and it's not technically attached to the historical building, so it does lose some of the context, I guess.
I'm not in favor of that, although it'd be easier for painting it somewhere, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move forward with that, working with Paul and working with the crew, and go from there.
Okay.
Let you guys know how things are going. And then also, Elliot has another request that he'd like to run by counsel.
Elliot, the paper, you can...
Pass these out, yeah. So, I'll pass these around. There you go. I'm teaching an eight-week mural class with a group of kids through GCA, Geogus Center of the Arts. And at the end of the eight weeks, we're gonna have a collaborative project where all the kids come together and paint a mural onto a wall. And I'll be overseeing everything and making sure that it looks decent enough to be on a wall somewhere. But I'm looking for a wall that the city would approve for us to paint a mural on to. The two walls here, the one, the one mural that's painted in the picture above is the one that I did two years ago, that's behind Beans on the square. I assume it'd be just a portion of that wall to the left. And then the wall on the bottom is attached to the fire department. And we're just looking for a space to put a mural for this class.
And you're looking for a theme as well?
Yeah, and if the city would like to provide a theme, that you guys could, and we would, I would use that theme to teach the class, and that's what the mural would be based on. If you guys would like to see something specifically painted.
Two completely different locations. The one is very visible, right up on South Street.
Yeah. Yeah, I couldn't think of any others. If anybody can think of any of these, it's not, you know, exclusive, these are just our buildings that I can think of.
Elliot, do you have any idea, like, how big this mural's gonna be? I mean, right, you're not gonna be up, have the kids up on ladders and stuff?
No, no. It's gonna be like, if we were to do either of these walls, I would cut out like a section, and it'd be kind of framed in there. It could even be something where, we've talked, if we have multiple classes, we could, like, if we section them, we could have, like, multiple murals painted by different groups of kids over time. But this is the first class that I've, that we've done, so I can't really show you anything that the kids would put together, but...
I like the idea of the one next to the Givens Garden mural.
Yeah.
Because it's, it wouldn't be disruptive, you know, for, right, it's a kind of a, it's like a more private space. You've got room to, you could start on the left, you could, you know, move over to the right as you were continuing on.
Yeah.
It's an ugly wall.
It is.
As we discussed two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like that option as well.
Okay.
And is this, there's no cost to the city for you to do this?
Correct.
You know when you're doing this?
The classes start last, our first week of June, so it'd be about the first week of August.
There's a little bit of sun back there, if you'll recall.
Yeah.
So we would just need to let the business, you know, the folks who park in there, so that we could just ask them to park back a little bit?
Okay.
Okay, right? I mean, that's what we would need to do as far as...
I believe that's our property. It's not our property.
So we would need to ask them if they could park back a little bit so that we could paint.
Okay.
So that would be the next step, right, to ask them?
Counsel just moved forward.
It'll be very structured, too, so I could give them specific times and dates where they just need to park further back.
How much room do you think you'd need? Five feet, six feet, 10 feet?
Once I, it might be like a group of, like, 10 or so kids, so maybe, I don't know how much space is back there, but...
I mean, you can have the length of the building, how much depth would we ask, have to ask them to park back, back?
I wouldn't want to get paint on their car, so maybe...
We could just designate two spots for them.
Yeah.
Because they double, they double park in there.
We could set aside a couple of the parking spots that the city has for them during this period of time.
And no one's in the farthest right now, there hasn't been anyone over on this side for a long time.
Yes.
With, like, 10 kids running around with paintbrushes, I wouldn't want someone's car to get paint either, so...
I let you do it.
So do we need to make a motion to the location?
I trust him with a brush more than you, not when he started.
Are we gonna see the design?
That's outside your door.
I could get it approved, yeah, because I plan on them creating it first, and then, but it might be very close to the start date, because that eighth week is when we're supposed to have the design realized. And then we wanted to paint a week or two at least after that.
And then you're still looking from us, a concept, is that what you...
Just a theme, if you guys wanted to do that, like...
Who owns this building?
Building, we own.
It's part of ours still?
Okay.
Okay. You gonna, like, something about council members? You wanna do people?
Yeah, sure.
You know, recognizing all the...
Are you saying our pictures?
I just, contributions, people contribute, I don't know.
Caricatures? Are you doing caricatures?
Kilroy.
So if, Elliot, you're going to start this, you said August, so that would mean for us to approve the design or for it to come council, we'd need it in July, so, right? We'd need it in July. So it's, it's...
Well, I thought you wanted to start in June. No?
The, yeah, the class itself starts June 1st, but the project isn't until the eight weeks after the class is gone, yeah.
Sorry. So it would be July 11th that we'd need to see you designing.
I'm sure I could like put something together that would replicate what they would be making.
That would be good enough.
Okay.
Yeah. And are these, how old are the kids going to do it?
It ranges from middle school to high school.
It'd be fine.
Yeah.
Something historic?
Oh, my goodness.
And then would you consider like the south wall at another time?
Yeah. The, wait, which wall are we talking about?
Are you talking about the firehouse? What are you talking about?
Old Village Hall.
Old Village Hall.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if the project goes well and they want to have another class and we agree on another design, yeah, we could do that.
Okay, we'll meander ideas and get something over to you if possible.
But we need to make a motion to approve, to allow him to do that?
That is, that's what we should do, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And the motion specifically is for...
The 106 building, right?
Elliot, to work on the 106 building?
Yes.
Okay. Further motions made and seconded, any other discussion? Call the question, please.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, maybe, maybe different scenes from the Maple Festival that you could do, you're going to look at a series of different murals. I don't know, I'm just...
Okay.
We'll come up with something, Elliot.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item number 13, legislation. Is there anyone who would like this, like the ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance amending Part 11 of the codified ordinances to adopt a new planning and zoning code.
Is there a...
I'm sorry, I need to, I need to number it first, so... Ordinance number 3273, an ordinance amending Part 11 of the codified ordinances to adopt a new planning and zoning code.
We have approval.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3273?
So moved.
Does that hit?
Further discussion? This is for Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance that amends Part 11 of the codified ordinances to adopt a new planning and zoning code.
Any other questions?
This is the third and last reading.
Third and last reading.
Of a long process.
Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda 13B, is there anyone who would like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
Ordinance number 3274, an ordinance amending the city's zoning map by rezoning certain parcels of real property.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3274?
So moved.
Second. Second discussion. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance amends the city's zoning map by rezoning certain parcels of real property.
Questions for Ben? Call the question, please.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda 13C, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none. This is back to our regular.
An ordinance adopting an announcement of decision regarding an amendment to the preliminary plan for the Thistle Creek subdivision plan residential district, PRD.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second. Moving to second it, discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Resolution number 7-24, a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify to the taxing authority the total tax valuation of the subdivision and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Does that hit?
Moving to second it. Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Moving on to 13D, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution requesting the county auditor to certify to the taxing authority the total tax valuation of the subdivision and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Does that hit?
Moving to second it. Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Resolution number 7-24, a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify to the taxing authority the total tax valuation of the subdivision and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 7-24, a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify to the taxing authority the total tax valuation of the subdivision and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 72, 7-24?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the, this is the procedural step to get the county auditor to certify precisely how much tax revenue levies at certain millage rates would generate. So we get this information certified, and then we use that to assess the amount of the levy.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
Nope. As Councilman Blackley mentioned earlier, we had these numbers informally from the county before the safety committee meeting, so now we're just going to them formally and getting the numbers.
Are we good? Any questions for Ben or Mark? Please call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
We've got an item that I'd like us to consider. Some of you may or may not be aware that Chardon tomorrow wrapped up its business at the end of April, and it, as I understand it, no longer exists. But it was an organization that our city manager was instrumental in starting, and over its 13, 14-year lifespan, I think it added a lot to the community. And I would like to see us do a resolution of appreciation for that organization.
Yeah, I would support that. We can garner enough information to create a document.
They're going to stay in existence long enough to ensure that all bills have been paid and taxes have been paid and whatever else that you have to do to full blown.
Right, so, you know, if we have one prepared, we could ask Madeline Horvath and the other board members, and we should say, "Yeah, thank you." I think it did a lot of good for the community.
Sure did.
And a lot of, and they're, basically what they did is they're taking whatever they're, whatever they had left in terms of property and that type of thing, and donating it to schools or different organizations, and whatever funding is going to be left, they decided to, they'd like to, they're looking at doing one or two scholarships for high school kids.
Okay.
Good, good to know.
Is that for June?
For June, yes, please.
Then, just a reminder, the pool will be opening on May 25th, 12:15. You can get your passes online or here until the pool opens, then you can get them down there as well.
The Chardon Square Association Family Market is now open on Saturdays, going on on Saturdays, and the Chardon Square Association Kids Fest event will be on Saturday, June 1st.
And I understand the car show, the Chamber Car Show is now going to be at the I-Squared. Working a lot.
Yep, I-Square will be hosting it this year and perhaps next year or two.
The FAA Fine Arts Association, we can do that now?
Oh, yes, okay.
I know there's a couple of channels there, but based on our agreement with the Fine Arts Association, they requested an additional board member recommendation be presented to them so that they can review that person and accept them or however they would proceed on that. And the recommendation I would make is Bonnie Robbins to be on their board. But once again, the board's going to get that name, their board, and then it'll be on them to decide whether she's brought into the fold.
Could you just go over her qualifications again?
Her qualifications, served with her on the Geoguleric Theater Guild Board for a few years. She is a financially astute person, being either an accountant and/or CPA, but had the best, the best way of looking at how the arts complements the city, and then, but needing to have the correct financial measures in place, and she always demonstrated a high level of that.
Good. So you're making that motion?
I will, I will make that motion.
I will second it.
Further discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.